At six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. If you'll please rise for the pledge and remain standing for the invocation. Reverend Brothers?
(Inaudible) As always, Lord, we ask to be blessed upon the city and those who serve it, live in it, work in it, pass through it. But tonight, we are one day away from our National Day of Thanksgiving. So tonight I've come to offer prayer and Psalm of Thanks. While we don't live in Eden, we do live in a blessed land. We have opportunity to become prosperous members of society. We have farms and industry that provide for us. We have a republic that guards our freedoms. I offer up tonight Psalm 111 to our Lord God Almighty. Praise the Lord. I will give thanks to the Lord with all my heart, in the company of the upright and in the assembly. Great are the works of the Lord. They are studied by all who delight in them. Splendid and majestic is His work, and His righteousness endures forever. He has made His wonders to be remembered. The grace of the Lord is gracious and compassionate. He has given food to those who fear Him. He will remember His covenant forever. He has made known to His people the power of His works, in giving them the heritage of the nations. The works of His hands are truth and justice. All His precepts are sure. They are upheld forever and ever. They are performed in truth and righteousness. He has sent redemption to His people. He has ordained His covenant forever. Holy and awesome is His name. The fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom, a good understanding of all those who use the Word. His praise endures forever. This I offer in the name of my Lord and Savior.
Thank you. Mike, if you'll take the roll call, please.
All right. Councilman Wertzbacher.
Present.
Councilman Lloyd.
Here.
Councilman Schlag.
Present.
Councilman Barr.
Here.
Councilman Valerius.
Here.
Councilwoman Nick.
Here.
And Mayor McLeod.
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schlag. Second by Mr.?
Barr.
Barr. Can I have a motion to amend Resolution One?
Motion.
Or, I'm sorry. We will ask the original.
I agree with the change, Mayor.
All right. We will amend Resolution One to reflect that Option Two is the option that we are voting on. And that is all right with Mr. Schlag and Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other corrections that need to be made? Hearing not all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It has passed. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of November 18th?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wertzbacher. Any corrections? Hearing not all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Now come to presentations. We will begin tonight with the Police Department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have a few things. We're going to start off with our four new officers who've graduated the Wayne County School Craft Community College as law enforcement officers on the 13th of this month. I'd like to have them all sworn in. Officer Hayner, Wilds, Patton, and Alawish, come on up. We're going to have Clerk Mizzi read your oath of office. Listen to him. He'll guide you.
(Inaudible) I got the bald spot thing, so I'll do it. There we go, guys. You'll know what I'm doing, won't you?
All right, gentlemen. I am here to swear you in. I'm not going to make you repeat after me. Just at the end, say "I do," "I swear," "I affirm," and whatever you're most comfortable with. Let me put these in order real quick. Sorry, sorry. I had them in the right order. All right, this is a good start, guys. All right. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and that you will endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of the City of Allen Park, free from partisan distinction or control, and that you will perform the duties of full-time police officer to the best of your ability, so help you God?
I do.
All right. Congratulations, guys.
At this time, I'd like to call the loved ones up for the pinning of their badges. You guys may call your significant other.
Congratulations. We will ask you to just linger with us a little longer so that Council may provide
some comments. You'll start with Mr. Barr.
Well, I just realized forty years ago, about two hours ago, I had my pinning of my badge. Please do not tarnish it, cherish it, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, number one. You know, I'm sure all of you are aware, you know, just today's society and the view on law enforcement officers, you know, the very small percentage that tarnish the badge, like mentioned. And it's, you know, that call to protect and serve is definitely not an easy call to answer, you know? And it's heartwarming to see the four of you up here answering that call, and I thank you for that. I applaud each of you. I thank your family for supporting you and following your dreams and your endeavors to protect and serve. And I just ask you to stay safe and thank you for your service, and God bless.
Thank you, sir.
So, welcome to Allen Park. Thank you for choosing Allen Park to be where you start off your career. Jacob, I happened to see the video of the tazing. I have to say, I felt some pain then when I was watching that. But you have a very supportive fellow officers here that will help guide you through. And so, thank you very much, and definitely stay safe.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, officers, for choosing Allen Park to start your career. I know you're going to do fantastic jobs, and a special thank you to your family that will be worried about you night and day, wherever you go, and thanks once more. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you so much for picking this city. And again, it's not an easy career that you've picked. It's long nights, and long nights for your families. But this is a great community, and very much appreciate you guys choosing to come here and continue to make it great. And just one special appreciation, I coached Jacob when he was in high school, and just so proud to see you staying here before with the Allen Park badge on your chest, coming back to your own community and serving the place that you grew up. So, it means a lot. So, thank you to all of you guys. I very much appreciate you.
Thank you for selecting Allen Park. You're going to find it to be a very, very supportive community. The community will have your back, and you couldn't ask for a finer police department in my guesstimation. Thank you for selecting, and thank you, your families, for allowing you to pursue your dreams in your chosen field.
Thank you.
And, yeah, the tazing was pretty enlightening. You're a better man than I am.
Just congratulations to you guys, and I've been busy with other stuff. I just realized, Mr. Patton, who you were, and Aunt Kelly, yeah, and you were a great coach.
Thank you so much.
Good luck, guys, and always stay safe, okay?
Thank you, sir.
I say congratulations, and thank you, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, sir.
Just going to reiterate what everyone else said. We are more than thrilled to have you join us. We hope that you have a long and successful career with Allen Park. We hope that we read about your retirement somewhere down the road. But thank you very much, especially for choosing this profession, and to your families for their support. It's quite obvious that they are extremely proud of you, and they should be. And we thank you so very, very much. Good luck to all of you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, I'm back. This one I'm very proud of. It's a community effort. This is awarding our four individual officers. It's for bravery and life-saving. On the October 24th of this year, approximately 10:00 p.m., Downriver Central dispatched the broadcast of an active fire at the American House in Southgate. Responding officers immediately confirmed a severe situation, reporting numerous residents were trapped on multiple floors with flames showing. Officer Sergeant O'Naldi, Officer Allen, Officer Burna, and Officer Cox responded to the location for mutual aid assistance. Upon arrival, the south side of the building was heavily engulfed in flames, and officers on scene advised that numerous residents, many of whom were elderly or had special needs, remained trapped on all floors. Without hesitation, these officers entered the burning structure and immediately began a systematic search for unaccounted residents. Their actions included in forcing, I'm sorry, actions included forcing entry into locked doors to alert elderly and special need residents who were completely unaware of the rapidly spreading fire. Body-wear camera of the officers shown them assisting numerous residents to safety. It is, their heroic actions, performed under intense pressure and directly against their own safety, representing the highest standards of law enforcement, warrant the bravery and life savings award. I'm proud to present this award to Sergeant O'Naldi, Officer Cox, Officer Allen, and Officer Burna.
(Applause) If you want to hold him up, we'll get a couple pictures. If you're ready. (Laughter) Come on, we watch you. (Laughter) Come on, we watch you. (Laughter) Don't know where quick. Come on up. Oh, yeah. Come on up. All four of you jump in there.
I just appreciate it. I don't feel much like a hero, but it was a heck of a thing, and I'm glad we got everybody out of that building.
Especially no fatalities. That's number one. Fortunately, lost a cat, and everybody went home. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. I appreciate the award, and I'm sure they do as well. It means a lot.
Thank you guys very much for the recognition. As the sergeant on the shift, I couldn't be more proud. It is in our job detail. This is what being a police officer is. However, getting to be alongside these guys and watch them without zero hesitation, running and handle business was incredible to watch. Same for our fire department. It was, you know, it was incredible to watch. So, thank you again for the recognition. Not necessary, but very much appreciated.
Well, I will say that you all have shown what you can do when you're under pressure and things are thrown at you unexpectedly, because I'm sure that you did not expect Chief Phelps to tell you that you were going to be speaking. But we will make this, I'm going to start at that end, because I would like council members and elected to be able to make some comments to you. So, we'll start with Mr. Mizzi.
Thank you, you guys, for being there. I take comfort living here. I don't even think twice. People like you and the firemen, I literally, why, I love Allen Park, so, thank you. I'd like to thank you. You ran into the face of danger as opposed to running away from it, and your training, you applied. And I'm sure every one of those residents and their families appreciate you, as well as both communities of Southgate and Allen Park. Thank you.
Like Sergeant O'Naldi said, I know that this isn't why you guys do those things. You don't do it for recognition or for certificates. That's why you guys put the badge on. That's why you guys do it every day. And I'm sure that there's countless things that you do on a daily basis that we don't have awards or certificates for, that are just as much putting yourself in harm's way. And I'll say this again, when the fire come up, I'm sure talking about the same thing. I have a friend that's in the service that said this. It's not paid for what you do, but what you're prepared to do. And I think that your actions on that day epitomize that, running into a building that's on fire and getting those people out there. So much appreciative of you, so appreciative that I have you out there protecting my family every night. Thank you so much.
Whoever's statement of my colleagues up here said already, thank you so much what you've done, and you may not feel that you deserve an award, but I'm not saying from those that do not run into that danger or put their life in danger on a daily basis when they go into work. Thank you.
So, I always think of the police and the fire as silent heroes. You put yourselves out there every single day, so it's an honor to be able to show our appreciation of how much that we appreciate you and what you do every day on a daily basis. So, thank you.
I just wanted to thank you all. You guys are heroes every day, regardless whether it's running into a burning building or just going through your daily shift. We can't be more appreciative of what you do each and every day, and we're just thankful that you're here in Allen Park and serving our community. Thank you so much.
Everything that everybody else has said, I concur. This was one of the as-needed job descriptions, because normally, police do not go into the fire. I just want to say thank you. You guys are great.
And I'm not going to hold you much longer, but it occurred to me that we do have Thanksgiving on Thursday, and we have so much to be thankful for. And you are among those that we are most appreciative of and thankful for, as are the residents of American House. I had the opportunity to meet some of them, so thank you so very much for going above and beyond. Be thankful. We are.
Thank you.
Those of you who are here with the Police Department, if you want to leave before we get into the next phase.
(Inaudible).
No one wants to listen to us.
Thank you for all who came.
(Inaudible).
All right, good. Now that we got rid of the cops.
Yeah.
Let's have some fun, you guys.
We good? All right.
Door's closed.
Well, thank you for having me tonight, Mayor and Council. First, I'd like to start off with introducing our newest team member, Jeff Campo. Jeff, want to come on up? So, this is Jeff. He just started with us two weeks ago. He has nine years of service as a firefighter or paramedic, and he chose to come to Allen Park because of its size and the small-town feel. So, that Allen Park thing that we always talk about, he saw it, and that's what attracted him. So, let's keep that thing going. So, Jeff Campo, welcome to our fire department.
(Applause) I'm not worried about my bald spot now. So, any angle, any angle. All right. Welcome to the City of Allen Park. I'm here to swear you in. You don't have to read anything after me. You just, at the end, say "I do," "I swear," "I affirm," whatever you feel most comfortable. All right. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and that you will endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of the City of Allen Park, free from partisan distinction or control, and that you will perform the duties of full-time firefighter to the best of your ability, so help you God?
I swear.
All right. Congratulations.
Think you got some competition in the mustache game there.
Bring it on.
Get out the rumors. Get out the young stick.
So, we do things a little bit different than the police, as you know. One of those is that we do not give out a badge to start. We believe that you have to earn your badge. So, what we do give our new firefighters is a nice shield for the helmet that has a giant P on it, and it tells everyone that they are a probationary firefighter. And it's nice and bright and pink or orange, so everyone can see it. But the biggest thing is that through history, a shield was something that you earned. You earned it through battle. It's what protected you. It's one of the things that you grabbed every day. And in tradition, we wear our shields over our hearts to protect ourselves. And so, that's why we make our firefighters earn that. It's something that should be sacred to them, and once you get it, you never want to tarnish it, and you never want to give it up. Did you want to say anything to?
Yes, we do.
Come on, Jeff.
Because we are equal opportunities.
Absolutely.
So, I will start with Mr. Barr.
Well, not only do I have four prior and current police officers, I have three firefighters in my family. One is retired. The other two are active duty in various agencies. I want to say thank you for choosing Allen Park. We are a little different than around here, so welcome to the family.
Thank you.
Again, I just want to say thank you for picking Allen Park. You know, hopefully that you enjoy that small-town feel. And again, chief, I don't know. It's looking good. Thank you.
So, yeah, also, thank you for choosing Allen Park. You are going to be working with an excellent group of firefighters. I've gotten to know quite a few of them, and I just admire with everything they do. So, you're going to be working with a good group. So, thank you.
Concur with what everyone said from down there. Great group of folks. I know that by myself getting to know them, and I'm very thankful that you chose our city. I think you'll really, won't regret that hometown feel that you chose to find, so, thank you.
Thank you so much for choosing Allen Park. It's really a great city. I think you chose well. I think as you, the more time that you spend here with our firefighters and with our community, I think that you're just going to appreciate that so much more. So, thank you again, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you for choosing Allen Park. And you're right, it does have a small-town feel. As a four-year resident and one who has worked and either lived in small towns throughout Michigan and the Midwest, it is uniquely different. It is a very, very welcoming community, and you're part of it now. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. You come at the right time. From what I understand, we're beginning a new fire truck and a new, perfect timing, so. He waited this long. He was waiting for, build it, and they will come. Thank you very much.
Mr. Campo, very, very much appreciate that you selected Allen Park, and we look forward to you finishing your career here and not moving on to any other community. As everybody has said here, it is a very welcoming community, and I think you will find the group of firefighters that you will be working with are top-notch. And of course, we are going to offer you some improved facilities soon, too, so, welcome, and thank you again, and thank your family. I can see that they are extremely proud of you, and they should be, and perhaps we'll see them at some of our functions. So, again, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Wow, what a great night it is for the City of Allen Park and all the employees, working very hard. So, we were called to a fire at the American House in Southgate back on October 24, 2025. And they had a thank you event for us, from the staff and all the residents, and they gave us an award. I wanted to show you that. We put these, we have another one from their previous fire, but these go on our mantle to remind us of all the people that we help and what it means for us, so. So, the fire that occurred at the Southgate American House on the night of October 24, 2025, was a tragic event that nonetheless ended in success. That success was due in large part to the many men and women who have dedicated their lives to service as firefighters, police officers, and EMS personnel. By working together and placing their trust in one another, they were able to set aside their fears and rescue the eighty-seven individuals inside the building. Amid the organized chaos, the members of the Allen Park Fire Department stepped forward and demonstrated bravery, extraordinary courage, and steadfast devotion to duty. Sergeant Ryan Croft and Sergeant Grant Peace placed ladders and successfully rescued victims from using those ladders. Captain Ken McLaurin, Sergeant Richard Hamilton, Engineer Chris Clark, and firefighter Tom Malcolm entered the building.
All right, good. Now that we got rid of the cops.
Yeah.
Let's have some fun, you guys.
We good? All right.
Door's closed.
Well, thank you for having me tonight, Mayor and Council. First, I'd like to start off with introducing our newest team member, Jeff Campo. Jeff, you want to come on up? So this is Jeff. He just started with us two weeks ago. He has nine years of service as a firefighter or paramedic, and he chose to come to Allen Park because of its size and the small-town feel. So that Allen Park thing that we always talk about, he saw it, and that's what attracted him. So let's keep that thing going. So Jeff Campo, welcome to our fire department. Did you get this one in?
I'm not worried about my bald spot now.
So any angle, any angle.
All right, welcome to the city of Allen Park. I'm here to swear you in. You don't have to read anything after me. You just, at the end, say, "I do." I swear. I affirm whatever you feel most comfortable. All right, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and that you will endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of the city of Allen Park, free from partisan distinction or control, and that you'll perform the duties of full-time firefighter to the best of your abilities? So help you God.
That's where.
All right, congrats.
Think you got some competition in the mustache game there.
Bring it on.
Get out the rumors. Get out the young stick.
So we do things a little bit different than the police, as you know. One of those is that we do not give out a badge to start. We believe that you have to earn your badge. So what we do give our new firefighters is a nice shield for the helmet that has a giant P on it, and it tells everyone that they are a probationary firefighter. And it's nice and bright in pink or orange, so everyone can see it. But the biggest thing is that through history, a shield was something that you earned. You earned it through battle. It's what protected you. It's one of the things that you grabbed every day. And in tradition, we wear our shields over our hearts to protect ourselves. And so that's why we make our firefighters earn that. It's something that should be sacred to them, and once you get it, you never want to tarnish it, and you never want to give it up. Did you want to say anything to?
Yes, we do.
Come on, Jeff.
Because we are equal opportunity.
Absolutely.
So I will start with Mr. Barr.
Well, not only do I have four prior and current police officers, I have three firefighters in my family. One is retired. The other two are active duty in various agencies. Want to say thank you for choosing Allen Park. We are a little different than around here, so, um, welcome to the family.
Thank you.
Again, I just want to say thank you for picking Allen Park. You know, hopefully that you enjoy that small-town feel. And again, I don't know. It's looking good. Thank you.
So, yeah, also, thank you for choosing Allen Park. You are going to be working with an excellent group of firefighters. I've gotten to know quite a few of them, and I just admire with everything they do. So you're going to be working with a good group.
Thank you.
Concur with everyone said from down there. Great group of folks. I know that by myself getting to know them, and I'm very thankful that you chose our city. I think you'll really, won't regret that hometown feel that you chose to find, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for choosing Allen Park. It's really a great city. I think you chose well. I think as you, the more time that you spend here with our firefighters and with our community, I think that you're just going to appreciate that so much more. So, thank you again, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you for choosing Allen Park. And you're right, it does have a small-town feel. As a four-year resident and one who has worked and either lived in small towns throughout Michigan and the Midwest, it is uniquely different. It is a very, very welcoming community. And you're part of it now. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. You come at the right time. From what I understand, we'll be getting a new fire truck and a new hot, perfect timing, so. He waited this long. He was waiting for, build it, and they will come. Thank you very much.
Mr. Campo, very, very much appreciate that you selected Allen Park, and we look forward to you finishing your career here and not moving on to any other community. As everybody has said here, it is a very welcoming community, and I think you will find the group of firefighters that you will be working with are top-notch. And of course, we are going to offer you some improved facilities soon, too, so, uh, welcome, and thank you again, and thank your family. I can see that they are extremely proud of you, and they should be, and perhaps we'll see them at some of our functions, so, again, welcome.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Wow, what a great night it is for the city of Allen Park and all the employees, working very hard. So we were called to a fire at the American House in Southgate back on October 24, 2025. And they had a thank you event for us, from the staff and all the residents, and they gave us an award. I wanted to show you that. We put these. We have another one from their previous fire, but these go on our mantle to remind us of all the people that we help and what it means for us, so. So the fire that occurred at the Southgate American House on the night of October 24, 2025, was a tragic event that nonetheless ended in success. That success was due in large part to the many men and women who have dedicated their lives to service as firefighters, police officers, and EMS personnel. By working together and placing their trust in one another, they were able to set aside their fears and rescue the eighty-seven individuals inside the building. Amid the organized chaos, the members of the Allen Park Fire Department stepped forward and demonstrated bravery, extraordinary courage, and steadfast devotion to duty. Sergeant Ryan Croft and Sergeant Grant Peace placed ladders and successfully rescued victims from using those ladders. Captain Ken McLaurin, Sergeant Richard Hamilton, Engineer Chris Clark, and firefighter Tom Malcolm entered the building through the stairwells and assisted residents out of the smoke-filled structure. After conducting multiple searches and double checks, they exited the building and began the difficult fight to extinguish the blaze. Deputy Chief Eric Taylor and I arrived and assisted Southgate Fire Command in establishing an incident command system to coordinate the many responding emergency crews. Deputy Chief Taylor was assigned to oversee staging for all fire, police, and EMS units, allowing incoming equipment and personnel to be organized and utilized efficiently. For these reasons and in many more, I am proud to recognize the actions of these team members and award each of them the Allen Park Fire Department Life Saving Award and Distinguished Service Award. Congratulations to these men. If I could have, Deputy Chief Taylor. So as you see on our dress uniforms, we have our awards and our badges that symbolize different things that people have done. Different events from education levels to service awards, community awards, and tonight, we're giving out two different awards. One is the Life Saving Award, and the other is the Distinguished Service Award. So congratulations. Next, I'd like to have Captain McLaurin, if he could make it. Not here, couldn't make it tonight. Sergeant Richard Hamilton. Hey, Richard, would you come on over here, we'll get a picture. Next, we have Sergeant Grant Peace. Next, we have Sergeant Ryan Croft. Next, we have Engineer Chris Clark. And finally, we have firefighter Tom Malcolm. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll ask Council to say a few words to you gentlemen. Barr.
On behalf of the residents, I will say, I know, as for the residents, I have to say thank you. I do know two people who were rescued. One is a fellow classmate of mine from high school, and another one through the Knights of Columbus, so, thank you.
Again, thanks for all you do each and every day. I think it's just, you know, it's difficult for a lot of people to understand that, you know, that one day is something that you guys are more than prepared to do every single day. And I think that's, you know, that takes a lot of, for people who work normal jobs, to comprehend, you know. You don't know what's going to happen each and every day. You know, you think about the unlikely nature of, you know, the one senior living area that burnt down, you know, a year prior, and then you have, you know, a very similar incident happen. You know, these things could happen, and we're just blessed that, you know, we have firefighters like yourselves who answer that call and are more prepared to do things like this as part of your job each and every day. And I thank you.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to say thank you very much. You definitely make myself, and I'm sure many of the residents in the community, feel much safer with you out there. I know a few of you personally, and it does not surprise me that you would run right in, help everybody. And I think, Chief, you said eighty-some people were in there? I had no idea that there was that many people that you ran in and saved, along with some of the other departments. So thank you very much for all you do on a daily basis. Thank you.
Everyone said, "Thank you so much for what you do and the bravery that you do. You do it because it's something that's part of the job, but also because I know your heart's in to do it." And I look forward to every year when the chief has a ceremony for all your accomplishments that you've had. But to come this early to actually honor all that you've done for this specific incident, I think was very important for the community to see, so you could see that without what you do, we wouldn't be as safe as the community or the surrounding community that you helped. Thank you for all your service.
As I said with the police officers, and I've said this to Sergeant Hamilton specifically, is you guys are, it's not paid for what you do, it's paid for what you're prepared to do. And again, this is exemplified in this, and I think every night, we pray that we don't need you. But whether it's a paramedic call or a house being on fire, I know I sleep easier at night knowing that you guys are there, and so appreciative of it. Like, like Councilman Barr, one of my colleague's fathers was just put into there, and he was safely evacuated, so very appreciative of it. And on another note, if any of you responded to the high school, that was my bad. I smoked up the wrestling room. That was so, so sorry. I apologize. Far less exciting, but in those cases, happy to have you, too, so appreciate it.
The definition of heroism and professionalism is right here in front of us. I look at the chief's reports that he provides us about, monthly, about the amount of calls that you're dispatched to, and how all of them go off flawlessly, including that. And that's what amazes me. Because you, when you're on duty, you don't have normal sleep patterns like the rest of us. And I look at the amount of calls, and I kind of shake my head, you know. I don't know how you do it, but you do it, and very thankful for you. Thank you. I look at you guys, and first of all, I think, dang, what's the average age here, you know? I know two of you graduated around the same time I did, but, um, no, in the night, anyways, not dating us. But it doesn't surprise me with every single one of you. I remember every one of you getting hired. And again, that's why guys like you and the women are why I live here. Thank you.
Again, thank you all very much. We are extremely proud of you. We are very fortunate to have you as part of our fire department. I will say that I hope that we don't encounter this on an annual basis, because someone commented it was almost a year to the date from the last fire. And I do recall seeing Officer Malcolm at a prior ceremony in Southgate. And while I enjoy seeing you, I hope it's under different circumstances in the future. Again, it's very difficult to put into words how much you are appreciated, but please know that. Very much appreciated, and thank you. Thank you all.
Cleared out pretty quick. Approximately two years ago, I had the opportunity to first stand in front of city council, mayor, and become a chaplain of Allen Park. That was one of, an exciting moment for me. And during that time, like I say, it's been almost two years, I've become the chief chaplain of Allen Park. Because somebody didn't want to do it anymore. And so, if I could, could I have my current chaplains come up? Come on, Fred. Allen Park's chaplain corps is unlike any other. Most chaplain corps, they deal strictly with the first responders, but we service everybody. We, three sixty-five, we're here for the city of Allen Park. It all its citizens as well as the first responders. So with that being said, we are about to add two more chaplains to the city of Allen Park. And if I could, Pastor Frank and Reverend Merlin, could you come up? I've had the pleasure of knowing these two, ooh, almost twenty years now. And when we were thinking, "We need more chaplains," I couldn't think of anybody better. Before they even were thought about being chaplains, they were here for the National Day of Prayer, both in which we had here. And they are very accountable. And so, at this time, I'd like to thank and honor those who are serving, and now the new ones, Pastor Frank Williams and Reverend Merlin Williams.
Thank you, Reverend Nelson. With any way you could. It's nice to see a female.
Yeah, she is the first.
Okay.
Well.
Welcome.
Well, we thank you. I think, you know, like you were saying, that you're, what you do for the community, not just the first responders, but everyone, and always being there, you know, to offer that, that, those, you know, those reassuring words and just that, that welcome hand and, and, you know, kindness is, I think it's overlooked. And we appreciate the addition of these two chaplains, as well as everyone who's served Allen Park. Thank you.
Well, I want to say, "Welcome," first off. You guys do some impeccable work, just like the other, the fire department and the police department, as well as our DPS. But I wanted to say thank you, you know, being the spiritual background for us, because we know who we can contact. And the lights keep on flashing.
Yes, did you want?
I was just going to say thank you for past, much, chaplain, courage, chaplain. Thank you for everything you've done. Right word. An Army veteran, that's when I came across it. I don't know what chaplain was, so I hear those words that helped me in my time of service and hearing the stories from. I know you do so much, and I'm a son of the community of Allen Park. Sure, that's where I should come in. So thank you for what you do. I know that's not easy. The stories you hear, the direction you point these individuals, the direction you do point them. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank, welcome to the recruiter club.
Just to add on, I've had the opportunity to talk to Pastor Pat about all the things. I think that some people that are at home might think that, you know, you're a chaplain, you come in to council once a week, and you say a brief prayer, and then we move on, but it's so much more than that. It's being there for our first responders, but not just for our first responders, staying with families of victims, of people that have been in car crashes or getting medical attention. And, and again, just being there for people at their absolute lowest moment. And I think that that speaks to your calling, you know, and speaks to your character and your investment in our community. So, thank you so much for joining, and thank you so much for all of you for everything that you do. It's very much appreciated. Have bless.
Thank you for everything that you do, and welcome to the corps.
Thank you for all your work. Welcome. People ask, "Oh, Allen Park has a, why does Allen Park have a chaplain corps? Why do they do invocation?" It's like, at one time, I believe we had over forty-some Christian churches in Allen Park. Unfortunately, it dwindles, but we're still at it. You're still at it. And whether you believe in what or not, it's, it's wise words and comforting words is the reality of the book, so thank you for what you do.
And now, thank you, thank you for joining the chaplain corps. I think, as Dan touched on, people have no idea the comfort and services that you provide. I know there are times when you have counseled with victims, you have counseled families. You have been there in times of stress and accidents. You have helped many of our public safety workers. You are very much appreciated, and we are very happy to have you, so thank you. And now we'll move on to some organizational business, and we will have the city administrators report.
Good evening, council, mayor, residents. After all that fun, I have less fun. I'd like us to think about supporting local small businesses in Allen Park during our Small Business Saturday that will take place on Saturday, November 29th. Also, the DDA Holiday Market takes place on Friday, December 5th, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Allen Park Community Center. Music and Fun with Melissa and Jake's Holiday Show takes place at the Allen Park Library on Monday, December 1st, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Mindful Meditation with Mike takes place on Saturday, December 6th, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Allen Park Library. Herb Side Yard Waste Collection ends on Friday, December 12th this year, and will resume on Monday, April 6th, 2026. The Shred Days and Styrofoam Collection in 2026 takes place on Saturday, April 18th, and Saturday, October 10th. Also, I would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and to just, to just let everyone know that the city offices will be closed on Thanksgiving Day and the day after, Thursday, November 27th and Friday, November 28th. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept and file the administrator's report?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius?
Second.
Second?
Go ahead.
Second by Ms. Nick. Any comments or questions? Hearing none or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. We now move on to public comments. You have five minutes to speak. All we ask is that you provide your name and the street on which you live. Please do not provide your full address, and the only other thing we ask is that you keep your comments civil.
Good evening, city council, mayor, Raymond Gustafson Quant. I want to thank the police officers and the firemen for everything they do every day. But I'm going to say one thing. What you saw today was amazing. But what you didn't see is really what they really and truly did that day. I saw a very small video, and to inform you, that video was put almost nationwide. It was downright scary. I watched the firemen and the policemen. I watched the firemen and the policemen on every step, going down the stairways, trying their damnedest to try to move senior citizens that I swear 98% of them were in walkers. Going down stairways, one at a time. And some of them were actually picking them up and bringing them down. You would never even imagine what they were going through. I can't tell you what news it was. I can't tell you what department it was. But you know what? My understanding was every one of our departments, every city, all the way to Detroit. And that's really who helped. It wasn't only Allen Park. It wasn't only Lincoln Park. It was South Gate. It was every major city around here, and like I said, including Detroit. That's amazing. But like I said, it was scary. I was not there, but what I saw in video taught me one lesson. I'm going to be on the first floor. Because who knows what happens when we are really in there and how much help they really need? I watched them absolutely take these gizmos and blow holes right through the door, getting their hands to unlock the doors that were locked from inside to get those people out that were sleeping. That's what was happening. So yes, I want to thank them. And I want to thank our new police officers, our new firemen. We need them. Nothing against the old timers. But boy, we got a young group of people that are going to be here with us for a while. You know, and not saying, in my mind, and I think all of us, every one of them earned their badges and their medals and their recognition for exactly what they did. If you don't, didn't see the video, you would never even imagine what they did. And I cannot even imagine them, what happened in, in New York when the towers got hit because they were doing exactly the same thing. And over 5,000 of them were killed during that attack on us. So with that, I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. To all the citizens, a happy Thanksgiving. You're going to be with your family. Grab hold of them. Give them a big hug and a kiss. Tell them you love them because you know, have no idea what tomorrow brings. With that, have a great day. Thank you.
Charles Bliven Champagne. First off, just want to say, as the ministry said, please support your local businesses, not just Saturday, but every day because they are the heart of the city. Also, again, great job to the police and fire, what they did. Like Ray has also said about be thankful. As I tell my coworkers all the time when they want, oh, I got to work, blah, blah. Be thankful you have a job. Be thankful you have a car that drove, that you drove to work. Be thankful you have a roof over your head. There's so much to be thankful every single day. So always think of that when like, you know, but there's always something. Always think of others, as Ray say, give your loved ones a hug and all that stuff because again, tomorrow you never know what will happen. Give someone a call. It, again, it, every moment matters. The only thing really I had to come up and speak again is those, again, DTE light poles that are still around the city, it's getting more and more and more around the city. I've noticed like down Park Avenue, by the church, I saw a pile of them. Again, still on Allen Champagne. I also want to say thank you to our police and fire. There was a car incident today on Champagne Allen and thank you for what they did with that. Also, great job Parks and Recs and everyone that, with the lighted Christmas parade, great job with that. Nice weather this year and, but it keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And wonderful, great event for our city. Same with the lights in our DDA area. I'm glad that now with Ekor's south, south and northern Allen Park, Allen Road has lights and everywhere. You can always keep growing and growing, growing. Again, suggestions for the future for the DDA is put tinsel around the light poles, just, or our, our businesses, to lay up their businesses like other cities do and stuff. So again, can always grow from it. And, but again, just, again, on Thanksgiving and every day, be thankful and stay positive. And again, support your local businesses. Thank you.
No one else was coming up? We will close public comments and move on to tonight's consent agenda, which consists of purchasing actions, of claims and accounts on the payroll report, and one licensing permit for door-to-door permit requested by Mohammed Hamad with Elite Prime Group or AT&amp;T Fiber Services with a $300 fee. And this will expire on December 31st. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Supported by Mr. Schleck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, consent agenda is approved. Moving on to Resolution One. A resolution to waive the city bid process, APCO 2-824, because there's no economic advantage to bid, and approve the five-year agreement with Priority Waste LLC. Option Two, for commercial and residential solid compostable and recyclable waste collection and disposal services with rubbish funds and authorize the mayor to sign. Motion, please. Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Take one from the left. Mr. Filipski.
Good evening, Mayor McLeod, city council members. As noted, this item is a request to renew our waste hauling and disposal contract with Priority Waste. As you know, it was reassigned to them in 2024. Our current contract expires in April, at the end of April of 2026. So we initiated a conversation with Priority to talk about, look at what options we might have for moving forward. They provided us with two options. The first option, as you can see in the attached chart that I included with the packet, reflects what we would otherwise be entitled to in terms of the per-unit cost for an extension that we actually have as one of our options on the current contract. So they incorporated that into that option one. That is really kind of far under the cost of what it is, what, what the average cost is regionally. So to make up for that, the subsequent years are kind of heavier in increases. Whereas option two sort of smooths out what that increase would be out of the first year and then achieve savings over the long run towards the, the end of the contract. We evaluated both of those options. We also took some time to evaluate some comparables for some recent bids that were local and found that what was being proposed to us was, was fair. And actually, my recommendation here recommends approving these second option. Because I think more than being fair in the longer term, the out-years of that contract, I think will be really beneficial to the city of Allen Park. Essentially, what you're approving tonight, if you would, is a five-year, it's a five-year contract with 10-year pricing. So at the end of that five years, either we have an off-ramp, should we want that, or we have locked-in pricing and it's the, will be the city commission's exclusive option at that point to extend for an additional five. So I think that provides us with quite a bit of security. Couple other things to note about this. This does not change the pickup method that we have now. A lot of cities are going to cart-only service, which limits the trash to what can be fit into the cart, maybe some special circumstances, some things outside. But it makes it a little bit more difficult for what the residents are used to. This maintains the cart plus service, which, which they've been accustomed to. And let's see, the, yeah, I think I touched on the points that I wanted to make. I had an opportunity, Mr. Cover was able to review the proposed agreement. We made a couple revisions and that's what's presented to you tonight. And it was also evaluated by the finance department for long-term feasibility. And it came back that it's within our, within our budget moving forward. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I also have some representatives from Priority Waste here, if there's something that they can't answer. Sure.
You made great points. In this contract compared to our current contract, this also includes if we were, key word is we were, to start picking up leaves on our own. As we've discussed in the past, this would reduce our cost. Mr. Filipski got that taken care of in this contract, so we have that option. So if we were to do something of that nature, we don't have to go back to the drawing board on a contract. Also, it includes something we've been having issues with downtown with dumpsters. We have problems within the way our ordinance is written for downtown businesses only. They're supposed to be on the dumpsters serviced from our residential service company. That is not occurring as we speak. We're trying to figure out an action plan to help that out. It's almost a punishment to be a downtown business when you've got to break contracts and things. So in this contract also is a potential of the city taking that on as us being the provider of those said dumpsters. So there's not some infighting of who's dumpsters who, and it adds dumpsters, dumpsters to the current amount we have with surroundings. And then on the other side of Allen Road where we don't have those enclosures, it adds there. That does not start immediately. That is, if we were to take that on in steps, but it has a pricing. I just wanted to include that this has, it's more in-depth of a contract for any changes we see coming in the future. And it's already built into that contract at a reasonable cost. I hope that kind of helps so we don't have to go ask Priority later if we were to do some of these. These things are in motion, but not there yet.
Well, one of the things that left out on me was the savings that we will incur with option two.
Yeah.
Over 94,000 during the years one through five. And similarly, over 775,000 during year six through 10.
Yeah.
And I think along with the services and not having to call for bulk pickup.
It's hard to, I think, if I may, to guess what a gallon of milk will be two years from now, let alone 10 years, the cost of that. So I think, I think we're in a good spot with this.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you guys.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate it. You too.
Thank you. Resolution Two is to grant or deny the special regulated use permit for Unit Four Pads D and E for an automatic car wash proposed on property zone Z6A located at the northern end of the Fairlane Green Shopping Center, conditional on meeting all of the planning commission recommendations and pending final approval from the building department. Motion, please.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Mr. Baker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is for a proposed car wash for the, it's actually C6A and that's the Fairlane Green. And that's actually commonly known as the Hill. This is part of the development project that's been going on for quite some time. We're starting to get some more movement. Like I said, I think I mentioned before, looks like a lot of the groundbreaking up there will have happened in this upcoming spring. But this, this part of the, the project is the, the car wash. And we do have a representative of the car wash here. If you happen to have any questions or concerns, feel free to ask us. But this is a regulated use and that's why it's before you.
Any questions? Going to have a presentation.
He's setting it up. Can I ask him something? What's his favorite color, at least? I don't know.
I do have a question. Just want to verify. Will this have the recycled water daily or is it all?
Yes, so we do have, the car wash will be equipped. Of course, this is a machine, but all you can see it here, it's in light gray. It's a reclamation system that's composed of three settling tanks with the reverse of the process. It allows us to reuse up to 90% of the water from wash to wash.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is approved.
It took you longer to set up your stand, unfortunately.
Because we will be going into a closed session, we will have the elected officials' comments at this time. And then we'll take a little brief break before we, we go. So we'll start this evening with Mr. Mizzi.
Just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and thank you all for coming out. God bless you and good night.
Mr. Wordsbacher.
Congratulations to our four new sworn-in police officers, our new firefighter, and then the recognition of our fine police officers and firefighters that were acknowledged tonight for their quick actions and really diverted something that could have been much more worse. A great deal of thank you to them. And congratulations to our new chaplains that have joined the chaplain corps. And with that, I yield.
Thank you. Ms. Nick.
First of all, I'd like to give some shout-outs. But I'd like to thank the Parks and Recs Department for an awesome lighted Christmas parade. I know how hard it is to put it together and organize it. So thank you very much for that. And I noticed Pam Smith was in the, after the parade, all the kids were so anxious and she was trying to corral them up while they were waiting for Santa and they were getting a little anxious. So thank you for that, Pam. But it was really nice to see all the residents that had come out and their smiling faces as we, as we drove along the route. So thank you very much. Also, being mayor, you have to perform weddings. And I got the nice privilege of seeing a wedding performed. And Deb Zettel and the mayor did an awesome job. There were a lot of emotions going on at that time. And I've been doing, working weddings for almost 18 years. And I have to say, and I did let the mayor know that if she ever wants to be an officiant, I'd be more than happy to recommend her. She did an awesome job. It was very emotional, but thank you both, Deb and, and the mayor, for that. I know Cole and Nicole were very appreciative of that. So when you leave city hall, if you're up here, take a look at the showcase. The historical museum has put some old ornaments in there along with some old statues of Santa and Mrs. Claus. So take a look at that. And I want to say, go Lions. That was going into overtime. That was kind of nerve-wracking, but they pulled it off. So thank you, Lions, for that. And everybody have a nice Thanksgiving and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Valerius.
I'm going to begin with a quote and also end with a quote. But I, in my classroom, I post on my board, my little whiteboard, I quote of the day every day. I don't think a lot of my kids even maybe read them, but they see them and I guess what they get out of them, they get out of them. But I started actually sharing them on social media daily, so. But I started actually sharing them on social media daily, so. And I also, you know, if you recall, way back in, Joe remembers this more than anything else probably, when I first took office in 2019 as council, I had a habit of constantly like writing things and coming up with things and kind of fell out of practice with that. And I think as I get older, I kind of want to do more of that. Not just for these occasions, but just like for myself, so. So I wrote something for Thanksgiving, so we'll see how it goes, so. The first quote, it says, "We tend to forget that happiness doesn't come as a result of getting something we don't have, but rather of recognizing and appreciating what we do." Quote comes from Frederick Koenig. So on Thursday, we celebrate Thanksgiving. Many will gather with family, enjoy a Thanksgiving feast, tell stories and reminisce, watch some football, fall into a turkey coma, take a nap, wake up and repeat. Although this holiday comes once a year, the reality is that it should be celebrated daily. I believe that giving thanks every day would truly change the world. How hard can it be to say thank you? As hard as sharing a smile? As difficult as doing something nice for someone? Harder than respecting others and their points of view? Unfortunately, today it sure seems that way. I try to give thanks every day. Thanks to my wife and son, my brothers and sisters, my mom and dad in heaven. Thank you to my relatives, my wife's family, my friends and their families, my dogs, Rudy and Bumblebee in heaven. Thanks to my current students, all my past students, which the number grows each year I teach. All my fellow teachers and the families of students I've had and have had and do have currently. Thank you to our new police officers, all our police officers, all the firefighters, EMTs, first responders, many of whom will be working on Thursday. Thank you to all the city employees of Allen Park, part-time, full-time supervisors, directors, our city attorney, our city clerk, our city treasurer, our city administrator and our mayor. Thank you to all who serve on a board or a commission, to those who volunteer their time for the city they call home. Thank you to my fellow city council members. Thank you for your motivation and drive to serve those we represent before serving ourselves. And I'm most thankful of all to God, for without him, we would have nothing to be thankful for. And I end with a quote, says gratitude unlocks the fullness of life. It turns what we have into enough and more. It turns denial into acceptance, chaos to order, confusion to clarity. It can turn a meal into a feast, a house into a home, a stranger into a friend. Gratitude makes sense of our past, brings peace for today and creates a vision for tomorrow. And that's from Melody Beatty. And with that, I thank you. I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Barr.
I have to concur with everything that's been said. So there's half my page. I want to say about the lighted Christmas parade last Friday, from what I've been hearing from several residents, it was probably the best one yet. I have to say a big thank you to all those who planned, participated in, watched and anything else for that parade. On a lighter note, spring is 114 days away, so this cold weather shall pass. I've been down south, so this is cold. Some people have questioned why I haven't been attending some of my assigned meetings. Well, it was because I had a motorcycle rally on a cruise ship that we raised money for dialysis patients to give them a vacation of a lifetime. This year, just on board, we raised after everything was done well over $180,000 for the dialysis fund to give people a vacation literally of a lifetime because we provided dialysis. Yes, I have always tried to put the city residents of Allen Park first. You know, I'm always trying to guide, help guide the growth and be fiscally sound. Again, thank you for letting me to be at your service. Earlier, I forgot one important department. When I said DPS, Department of Public Works, need to also say thank you to the Parks and Rec people. They provide a lot of help. I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy watching our Detroit Lions trounce the Green Bay Packers. I hope it's at 1:00 PM on Thursday. So, go Lions! I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Slack.
Just want to say, start with what Chief said, Chief Rowelly, he said, "Have a great night around the park."
Thank you. Thank you. So I echo that. As we all saw, it was, makes me feel, my heart's glowing like the soon-to-be Christmas holiday, the Grinch. My heart is, grew so much today to see everything we did, to see bravery and selfless service on full display and amplified. And I do, sir, thank you for your poem that you shared. And I remember your poems pretty vividly as we first went to the dais and then went under Zoom to take care of the people's business during COVID. So I think with saying that, I want to thank everyone, the department heads, the staff and everyone during that time and every time, fire department that we saw today, our police department. And it's a reminder that we have to always find time to stop and thank the people who make a difference in our lives. And it doesn't have to be just around special days like today, special days that we're gonna be... But to thank the teachers that are in our community, thank our neighbors just for helping. Thank my colleagues, especially my colleague right now that just thanked me to turn on my mic. Thanksgiving and other things like that isn't just a holiday. It is, it has to be a reflection everywhere. Because it's generous, the hard-working, the willingness to stand up for one another. That's something that I try to echo every day and I'm thankful for the opportunity to serve in Allen Park. I know my wife at home, Bridget. I'm thankful for her to take care of our boys, Gary Jr., frankly. Thankful for every opportunity I will have to go forward. And today is play of Dad Day, according to the National Fatherhood Initiative. So as Dad, as I'm thankful for those boys and thankful that I will hopefully, we have a great session, or study session, or closed session that we are going to vote on. But thankful for every resident. And I want them to have a safe, warm and meaningful Thanksgiving and a meaningful, thankful, thankful day every day going forward. Thank you.
Mr. Lloyd.
So, yeah, it's, I was talking about this with Mr. Murray up here, that it's exciting when we have, the room is packed for good things. Because we've seen it packed before for not great things. So amazing that we were able to celebrate new firefighters, new police officers, the work that our firefighters do, the work that our police officers do, the fact that we're adding Chaplain Corps. So I think it, I mean, every time we're up here, good things are happening for Allen Park. I think that as a city, we are moving in a positive direction continually. And just so proud of all of our employees and all the work that they do. Before I go any farther, Councilman Valerius informed me today before we started, showed me a beautiful picture of newest member of the Allen Park family, Sadie and Kyle. Kyle, our Deputy Parks and Rec Director, they had their baby, yeah, baby girl.
This morning.
Today, this morning, yeah. So, yeah, on a council meeting, what a great excuse not to be a council. So, so huge congratulations to Sadie and Kyle, you know, and just wishing them all the best. We've got, the population of Allen Park has grown by one, at the very least. So that's just big congratulations to them. I just want to say real quick, I had to run out of here last week because we had an event over at the hockey arena. And it was Mr. Mizzi's anniversary last week. And I just want to say a couple of things, because I'm, one thing that I am thankful for is the things that Clerk Mizzi brings to the table, and that has many things. One, just the work of being the city clerk, yes, doing all the things that we see in here and taking our notes and making sure that we're dotting our t's, crossing our i's, all of that stuff. But the work of the putting on these elections, which as, and for good reason. You know, the state of Michigan is constantly trying to make it so that there's more access to voting. But whenever we do that, that's putting a little bit more work on our clerks, a little bit more making sure that we have that early voting, making sure that we have the people that are staffed. And it's, it's an amazing thing to see what Clerk Mizzi does around any election. Not just the big ones, but especially the big ones. That same thing is happening across the nation in cities and counties, all over our country, all over our country. And a lot of time, it's thankless work, but it is the work that makes sure that the wheels of democracy keep spinning. It is the things that, you know, when people talk about massive levels of fraud or whatever it is, they don't realize that it's people like, you know, Clerk Mizzi that are doing thankless job, that are staying up, like driving ballots to Detroit at 1:00 in the morning and making sure that everything is getting done so that your votes as citizens of Allen Parks get counted. And that's, it's hugely appreciated. In addition to that, one thing that I'm hugely appreciative of, is it 20 or 30 years? 30 years. I'm 37. Like I said, and look, talk about bald spots. So, so I was, I was, I was still in Little League when Clerk Mizzi started this. The institutional knowledge that he brings. And every once in a while, we get a glimpse at it as just knowing all the, all the things that have gone and all the people that have come up here. And, and just, it's something that continuity of government, that's something that is just hugely important. Making sure that you're not making the same mistakes again. And when you're making the same mistakes, knowing who made it before and how can we avoid it or do it better this time. And lastly, and just apologies, because I know it comes up so much on here, but I want to say it, and we were talking about it before I came up here. Mr. Mizzi was one of my dad's students at Cabrini High back in 90, 94. And it was something that he always talked about, about how proud he was that one of his former students was up here and making sure that government worked. It was, it was something that he said, you know, as I was still coming to meetings, getting ready to run for council before he passed away. And so I know you know it, but I'm going to say it up here for everybody, that my dad was very proud that you were his student and I'm, you know, proud to sit up here with you, so. Massive appreciation, very thankful for him. Man, I'm thankful for everybody up here. I'm thankful for this city. This is, a lot of times, this can be a very difficult job. And for those sitting at home, I'm by no means complaining. I'm, I'm very thankful that I get to have a seat at the table and try to make this a better place. But I'm just thankful for all the people that I, I get to do it with. And, you know, the late-night conversations and talking about things that just pop up on a random Wednesday afternoon that we have to all of a sudden figure out for mayor, for your leadership, for all my members, all the members of council, for all of our department heads, and just having such a great, amazing city to live in. I, it is truly, there's, it's, people, people leave, but they almost always come back. And, and I think it's for good reason. So thank you all so much, happy Thanksgiving, and we'll see you guys in December.
Thank you. There's a lot for us to be thankful for. But I do want people to keep in mind, and this kind of ties in with a comment that Mr. McGusson made. Make sure that you keep in touch with the people that you care about and the people you love. Make sure that you tell them what they mean to you. And keep in mind that there are many, many people this year who are going to be missing someone for the first time. They won't be there at Thanksgiving, they won't be there at Christmas, they won't be there to see some of the other things that happen in their life. And unfortunately, I seem to have a lot of friends this year who are going through that very thing. So I think as someone else commented, it doesn't take much to say hello. It doesn't take much to say, to give a stranger a smile and appreciate what other people may be going through. Like everyone here has said, I'm thankful for many, many things. And there are times when I am by myself and I'm just thinking of things that I am so grateful for so many, many things in my life. And with that, I will ask for a motion to convene into closed session for the purpose of pending litigation with the VDG Monroe LLC et al. versus City of Allen Park as permitted under MCL 15.268. Motion, please. Motion by Mr. Slack.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Roll call, vote.
Madam Mayor, I have a motion that was made by Councilman Slack and it was supported by Councilman Lloyd to convene into closed session for the purpose of pending litigation with VDG Monroe LLC et al, excuse me, City, versus the City of Allen Park as permitted under MCL 15.268E. Shall we convene, Councilman Barr?
Yes.
Councilwoman Neck?
Yes.
Councilman Lloyd?
Yes.
Mayor McLeod?
Yes.
Councilman Slack?
Yes.
Councilman Valerius?
Yes.
And Councilman Wertsbacher? The yeses have it, we shall convene.
Okay, what I will say is, we will convene at 7:35 to give people a few minutes to do whatever they need to do and perhaps say something to anyone who's not...